KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to county commission broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. We're a few weeks out from Aging Senior Expo, so I've invited Annette Graham to come and talk about the event and why it's such a big hit.
Morning, Annette.
Morning, Annette Graham, Department on Aging Director. The annual Central Plains Area Agency on Aging Senior Expo is just around the corner. We hope you grab a friend and come out and plan to spend the day at Senior Expo. We'll have valuable information, access to health screenings, new opportunities including volunteer and travel, and some local sales opportunities that interest adults age 55 and older. So join us at the 33rd Annual Senior Expo and experience it for yourself, and it is on September 27th at 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We'll have this at three fantastic locations in Wichita, Botanica, the Wichita Gardens, the New Advanced Learning Library, and the Wichita Art Museum. So you can come and experience a fun and educational day at the Senior Expo. The entrance to Senior Expo and admission to the museums is complimentary to anyone age 55 and older and a caregiver of all ages. We'll have over 120 local and national vendors, and we're also going to do our annual fashion show this year, is the Black and White After Five Fashion. We'll have interactive booths, they will have a park and ride transportation between all locations, and there will be lunch opportunities at each site for $7. Some highlights for our Senior Expo are the health screenings, which will include spinal screenings, video ear screening, podiatry foot screening, blood pressure, and more. We'll have interactive booths, we're going to have some mini live and learn workshops, which include topics such as healthy cooking, genealogy, quirky Kansas places to visit. We'll also have music at each location, so we'll have some entertainment. And some other fun activities we have planned for this year include donuts and refreshment in the morning, get to be able to tour the Advanced Learning Library and the Wichita Art Museum along with the Wichita Botanic Gardens. As I said, our After Five Fashion Show, which will be at the Lotus Hall at Botanica at 1:00 p.m. We'll have entertaining booths, including a photo booth and Family Feud game show. We'll have local vendors there providing unique gifts and other items for sale, and healthy health screenings and tips. So it's going to be a fun day, and we look forward to having a large crowd like we always do. We have people that put this on their calendar and plan to attend every year. It's just a great opportunity to come out and get the information that you and your family and your loved ones might need, and to have some fun.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for letting us know that, Annette. We look forward to it. And a couple of us commissioners actually qualify to get in free.
Yes, we'll be looking for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and a brief recap of the meeting this morning. We have a few minutes, two proclamations to consider, a report from the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition. We're celebrating a few retirements this morning as well, and then there will be a review of big board items. So Chairman, I will let you kick off the meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I want to welcome all everyone that's here in the audience, all those that are joining us on TV, those that are joining us online. I feel real safe today. I see in the audience we have at least two doctors, a couple nurses, half a dozen paramedics. If all else fails, we've got three or four attorneys sitting out here. And beyond that, we have a pastor. So I think we're going to get through the meeting today very well. I want to welcome everyone. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for September 12th, 2018. Madam Clerk, first item.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Jeff Gannon, Chapel Hill United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. We give you thanks and praise, O God, for the gift and beauty of this new day that you have made. We pray that you would help us to rejoice and to be glad in it. We give thanks and praise for these who serve you. We pray your blessing upon them, that you'd grant them wisdom and discernment about all things, that they would humble their hearts before you and recognize that you and you alone are the Holy One. And so we all come before you with grateful hearts. For those who serve you so faithfully, we especially praise you for those among us who are retiring this day, especially Scott Hadley. I pray your blessing upon him and his family. Thank you for those who serve our community, our county, our city so very well. We entrust this meeting to you in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for being here today. I also try and recognize our elected officials, and Dr. Shelley Stedman is in the audience. Not only does she work for forensic science, she's also the mayor of Mulvane. Welcome. Next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Randzow.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. I have one individual signed up to speak on the public agenda today. Bruce Gass is here to speak about field trips. Approach the podium, please, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your service, and thank you for the hours you spend listening to crazy people on the telephone. I appreciate you guys. I serve at the pleasure of James Glenn Denon on several boards as a man off the street, and one of the boards I serve on oversees a block grant from HUD. And as part of that, the funds that we use, we sponsor three day camps during the summer for underprivileged children. And we are the sole financier of that program. It is actually an educational day camp. And some of these children, I am told, have never gotten out of their neighborhoods, and so the field trips are quite a highlight and very exciting. Two of those field trips are, of course, to Exploration Place and our beloved zoo. And I was surprised, as our camp director gave us a report, I was maybe naively surprised to find that we, the county, charge we, the city, for these children to come in to the zoo and to Exploration Place. I don't know if it's discounted or not, but I was surprised at that. And the left hand seems to be charging the right hand to do good with these children. So I'm also been in city government long enough to know that everything is complicated. And number two, that I do not see the big picture like you gentlemen see the big picture. So my quest is simple. I'd like to ask the county to start, stop charging for these children to come into Exploration Place and the zoo when they are in these camps and on these field trips. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir, and we can look into that. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak today, but we always offer to anyone else that's in the audience, is anyone else in the audience that did not have a chance to sign up, would they like to speak on the public agenda today? Seeing no one, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, special meeting minutes of August 9th, 2018.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've all had a chance to review the minutes from August 8th and also from August 15th. I move that we approve both of those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring Forensic Science Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas forensic science is a vital public service, and access to quality forensic analysis dramatically improves the investigation of criminal activity, leading to the exoneration of innocent and the prosecution of the guilty. And whereas forensic science plays a critical role in the public outreach and crime prevention, and that role is evolving within the criminal justice community. And whereas crime scene investigators, forensic science examiners, forensic scientists, and forensic technicians provide unbiased, accurate, and reliable analysis of evidence. And whereas numerous professional organizations across the country have recognized September 16th to the 22nd, rather, 2018 as Forensic Science Week. And whereas the dedicated and hardworking individuals that comprise the Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center are worthy of recognition for their commitment to proper scientific and medical investigations to support the cause of justice. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David Dennis, the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 16th to the 22nd, 2018 as Forensic Science Week throughout Sedgwick County, and encourage all residents to learn more about the importance of forensic science and show their sincere appreciation for the people, the technologies and facilities that make reliable forensic science possible in our community, dated September 12th, 2018. And Dr. Rorig is here to receive the proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the proclamation.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Welcome, Dr. Rorig.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, Dr. Tim Rorig, Director of the Regional Forensic Science Center. On behalf of our 38 dedicated scientists and technicians at the center, I'm very pleased to accept this proclamation and extend a thank you to you. I was able to pull Dr. Stedman away from the laboratory to be here with me. The rest of the staff are busy working on cases as I speak. A lot of our work is really unknown to the public outside of the criminal justice system. Our drug chemists at the center, they identify new and dangerous drugs that are out on the streets in our community. Our DNA scientists, they will identify unknown burglars, rapists, and others that commit very violent crimes in our community. Our firearms examiners will link guns that are used in drive-by shootings or in homicide cases, along with our toxicology scientists, who will identify these dangerous drugs and people that are driving under the influence of them, or that caused death to individuals in Sedgwick County. And not to mention our pathologists and our medical investigators. Our pathologists will help families understand why their loved ones passed away and how that may have occurred. Our medical investigators may be the first, and we're going to hear about this later today, will be the first if individuals come in contact with families of victims of suicide, and extend their assistance in helping them understand this tragic event in their life. In addition to all this work that our scientists do, we testify in court, we interpret, we explain these results to the jury, to the judge, so they can understand the meaning of the work that we do. But more importantly, this mission could not be accomplished without your commission, your support and backing of our center. So with that, I would like to thank you for the proclamation and also the support that you give the Regional Forensic Science Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rorig. Mr. Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Rorig, I'd just like to emphasize the fact that we appreciate the work of you and your staff and the proper administration of justice in our county and in the region. The scientific and technical knowledge that you all employ to come to right conclusions about facts in a case is absolutely invaluable, and I don't think that we could do the good job of providing good application of justice in our county without your services. So please express our appreciation to your folks.
I will do that.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that I agree with the previous comments, but I wanted to just highlight the fact that we're having a record level year in a bad way in the community. I think there's 37 homicides this year, if I understand correctly, so far.
It's up, yes.
And I know that that adds a lot to what you have to do there in your facility there. So I just want to say thank you for managing the high pressures you're dealing with right now, and I know that you do a tremendous job because you have to produce scientific understanding and analysis of whatever goes before a court. So it's scrutinized very harshly, if you will, and you guys do a great job. And if I understand correctly, most of these homicides ultimately are solved in the Wichita area. So we have a great organization led by you and your staff, and I just want to say thank you for what you do. And despite the fact that things are more difficult today with all the added demographics and the statistics that are going in the wrong direction, so to speak, you guys are keeping up with it and doing the job. We have not added a huge amount of staff to your organization, so you're just finding ways to make it work. And so I want to say thank you for doing that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Rorig. One of the first places I got to tour after I came on the commission was your Forensic Science Center and get to meet your staff and see what you do over there firsthand. I appreciate what you do for our community.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here today. Next item, please.
Item D, proclamation declaring National Suicide Prevention Week.
Commissioners, I have another proclamation to read. Whereas the United States, in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 12 minutes, with an average of 44,193 deaths by suicide this year. Every four days, someone in Sedgwick County dies by suicide. And whereas psychological studies have consistently found that the overwhelming majority of people who die by suicide, 90% or more, had a mental health disorder at the time of their deaths, and often these disorders had not been recognized, diagnosed, or adequately treated. And whereas far too many Sedgwick County residents and Kansans die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable, in 2017, 96 Sedgwick County residents died by suicide. And whereas the mission of Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition is promote and implement evidence-based approaches, local research, and community change to reduce the impact of suicide with the ultimate goal of zero suicides in Sedgwick County. And whereas in Sedgwick County, help is available by calling the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Hotline 24 hours a day, seven days a week at 316-660-7500. Now therefore be it resolved that I, David T. Dennis, chairman and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of September 9th to 15th, 2018 as National Suicide Prevention Week. The topic of suicide will continue to challenge us all to increase our awareness and education. And I call upon the residents for our community to join me in learning to recognize the signs of someone at risk, taking those signs seriously, and knowing how to respond. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we have Deidre Helm, President of Suicide Prevention Coalition, manager of Calm Care's Community Crisis Center with us today. Welcome.
Thank you. Again, I'm Deidre Helm, I'm serving as the president for the Suicide Prevention Coalition this year, as well as working at Calm Care. I want to say you're going to hear in a minute from Dr. Claus about the statistics for suicide here in Sedgwick County in 2017, and I want to say that this proclamation seems to be extremely important this year, given that our rates are at a record high. So on behalf of the Suicide Prevention Coalition, I want to thank you for recognizing this and promoting the prevention efforts here in Sedgwick County, so we can reach our goal of zero suicides here in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all you do at Calm Care, not just suicide prevention, but everything that you do to help folks that are in crisis. But this is an especially important week that we can get the word out to help everyone that may be contemplating anything as serious as that. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item E, Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition 2018 Annual Report.
Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Dennis, Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to be here with you this morning to share some of the data from the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition regarding 2017 deaths right here in our community. So I'm Nicole Claus, and I'm a psychologist at KU School of Medicine and a member of the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And the data that I'm going to share with you this morning are really made possible through a collaboration with the Sedgwick County Division of Health and with Dr. Rorig's team at the Regional Forensic Science Center. And the resources and information provided from these organizations have been invaluable in tracking and monitoring what's going on with our suicide rates locally. So I feel like I come back year after year and have to tell you that we are again at a record high in suicide deaths in our community. There were 96 deaths last year, and that's the highest since we started tracking these data in 2001. And we are not alone here in Sedgwick County. Here you can see the gray line is national rates, and those have been rising. But rates here in Sedgwick County and across Kansas are consistently higher than the national rates. And when we look at method of suicide, we've seen that gunshot deaths have seen a pretty steep increase over the last several years. And suffocation and overdose deaths are the second and third causes of suicides. And that's consistent with national numbers as well. Last year, we had seen a spike in deaths among 25 to 34-year-olds, and this year that came back down to more typical levels. mental illness. So that does not include those who had unknown or undiagnosed mental health conditions. And roughly a third of individuals who died had a history of suicidal thoughts, and about a quarter of them had a history of suicide attempts. And when we talk about the increasing rates of suicide in the community, the question always becomes, why is this happening and what's going on with these individuals? And so for the first time this year, through some collaboration with the Forensic Science Center, we were able to dig a little bit more deeply into that and look at recent life stressors. And what we found was that in younger individuals, relationship stressors were the most common type of stressor described. And in older individuals, we saw higher rates of physical health problems. And overall, just over half of our individuals who died of suicide had a history of a significant medical issue. Other factors that came up in the data last year, nearly a quarter of those who died of suicide were veterans. About a third had alcohol in their system at the time of death, and about a quarter had an illegal drug in their system. And even one suicide death in our community is too many. Suicide is preventable, and I would invite the entire community to get involved and learn about warning signs and how to access help for themselves or a loved one who may need that. And we had volunteers out around the community on Monday handing out these bookmarks, and I believe you guys all got copies of those, that describe some of the warning signs, as well as what you can do to help somebody who may be struggling. There are also several events coming up and opportunities in the community to get involved and help prevent suicide. So this Friday, the VA is hosting a mental health summit, and the topic is preventing suicide through building communities. And that is free and open to the public.
Well, Doctor, thank you very much for being here today to speak with us. We appreciate it very much, especially during this suicide prevention period of time and providing us the information. I believe we have a commissioner that's got some comments. Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Dr. Claus, thank you for being here today and providing us this update. It's still a, I mean, I think I'm healthy-minded, but this is depressing to see these statistics, that we have 97 folks in our community who decided to take their life. Is there, is there, I don't think in your presentation, did you talk about economic factors? Is that, is that an influence in this?
You know, one of the things that we were looking for as we were reviewing autopsy files was economic issues or stressors. And I can go back to our life stressors slide. Financial problems and job problems were identified in a handful of those who died of suicide, but the relationship and health stressors were much more common. And those are just the ones where it was noted in the autopsy file that that was a particular stressor for the individual, but certainly just larger economic factors may certainly play a role.
Okay, well, and I was curious about why the different, why the spike in older and younger, but I think that you answered that question, and it's, for the younger people, it was just peer pressure type issues?
It was often some sort of relationship problem, often a breakup of a relationship or conflict within a family or friendship that was a precipitating or contributing factor.
Okay, well, I appreciate that you have called us to our attention once again. I think we need frequent reminders of this, and just, you know, hope that you have good success in trying to get the word out that it is preventable, and each one of us has a responsibility to be sensitive and respond when we see the indicators of suicide tendencies. So thank you for being here.
Absolutely. I hope to be back with better news next year.
So do I.
Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask, can you provide some data going back a couple of years on how these numbers have changed on these?
Say that this proclamation seems to be extremely important this year, given that our rates are at a record high. So on behalf of the Suicide Prevention Coalition, I want to thank you for recognizing this and promoting the prevention efforts here in Sedgwick County so we can reach our goal of zero suicides here in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all you do at Calm Care, not just suicide prevention, but everything that you do to help folks that are in crisis. But this is an especially important week that we can get the word out to help everyone that may be contemplating anything as serious as that. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, Item E, Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition 2018 Annual Report.
Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman Dennis, Commissioners. I appreciate this opportunity to be here with you this morning to share some of the data from the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition regarding 2017 deaths right here in our community. So I'm Nicole Claus, and I'm a psychologist at KU School of Medicine and a member of the Sedgwick County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And the data that I'm going to share with you this morning are really made possible through a collaboration with the Sedgwick County Division of Health and with Dr. Rorg's team at the Regional Forensic Science Center. And the resources and information provided from these organizations have been invaluable in tracking and monitoring what's going on with our suicide rates locally. So I feel like I come back year after year and have to tell you that we are, again, at a record high in suicide deaths in our community. There were 96 deaths last year, and that's the highest since we started tracking these data in 2001. And we are not alone here in Sedgwick County. Here you can see the gray line is national rates, and those have been rising. But rates here in Sedgwick County and across Kansas are consistently higher than the national And when we look at method of suicide, we've seen that gunshot deaths have seen a pretty steep increase over the last several years. And suffocation and overdose deaths are the second and third causes of suicides. And that's consistent with national numbers as well. Last year, we had seen a spike in deaths among 25 to 34-year-olds, and this year that came back down to more typical levels. But we saw a significant increase this past year in older adult deaths as well as younger adults, the 15 to 24-year-olds. And males are much more likely to die of suicide than females. Roughly 75% of the suicide deaths in our community are males, and that's, again, consistent with national trends. And here in Sedgwick County, the vast majority of suicide deaths are in non-Hispanic white We saw this year that 60% of the individuals who died of suicide had a known history of mental illness. So that does not include those who had unknown or undiagnosed mental health conditions. And roughly a third of individuals who died had a history of suicidal thoughts, and about a quarter of them had a history of suicide attempts. When we talk about the increasing rates of suicide in the community, the question always becomes, why is this happening? And what's going on with these individuals? And so for the first time this year, through some collaboration with the Forensic Science Center, we were able to dig a little bit more deeply into that and look at recent life stressors. And what we found was that in younger individuals, relationship stressors were the most common type of stressor described. And in older individuals, we saw higher rates of physical health problems. And overall, just over half of our individuals who died of suicide had a history of a significant medical issue. Other factors that came up in the data last year, nearly a quarter of those who died of suicide were veterans. About a third had alcohol in their system at the time of death, and about a quarter had an illegal drug in their system. And even one suicide death in our community is too many. Suicide is preventable, and I would invite the entire community to get involved and learn about warning signs and how to access help for themselves or a loved one who may need that. And we had volunteers out around the community on Monday handing out these bookmarks, and I believe you guys all got copies of those, that describe some of the warning signs as well as what you can do to help somebody who may be struggling. There are also several events coming up and opportunities in the community to get involved and help prevent suicide. So this Friday, the VA is hosting a mental health summit, and the topic is preventing suicide through building communities. And that is free and open to the public. I believe they would appreciate an advanced registration, just so they know how many are coming. But I'd invite everybody to come out and be involved in that. On Saturday, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention is hosting an Out of the Darkness Walk for Suicide Prevention. And there is also a free suicide prevention training coming up at the downtown YMCA a week from this Saturday. So there are several opportunities, and I encourage everybody to get involved and try to prevent suicide. Thank you for your time, and I would welcome any questions you guys may have.
Well, Doctor, thank you very much for being here today to speak with us. We appreciate it very much, especially during this suicide prevention period of time and providing us the information. I believe we have a Commissioner that's got some comments. Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Dr. Claus, thank you for being here today and providing us this update. It's still a, I mean, I think I'm healthy-minded, but this is depressing to see these statistics, that we have 97 folks in our community who decided to take their life. Is there, is there, I don't think in your presentation, did you talk about economic factors? Is that, is that an influence in this?
You know, one of the things that we were looking for as we were reviewing autopsy files was economic issues or stressors. And I can go back to our life stressors slide. Financial problems and job problems were identified in a handful of those who died of suicide, but the relationship and health stressors were much more common. And those are just the ones where it was noted in the autopsy file that that was a particular stressor for the individual. But certainly, just larger economic factors may certainly play a role.
Okay, well, and I was curious about why the different, why the spike in older and younger, but I think that you answered that question, and it's, for the younger people, it was just peer pressure-type issues?
It was often some sort of relationship problem, often a breakup of a relationship or conflict within a family or friendship that was a precipitating or contributing factor.
Okay, well, I appreciate that you have called us to our attention once again. I think we need frequent reminders of this, and just, you know, hope that you have good success in trying to get the word out that it is preventable, and each one of us has a responsibility to be sensitive and respond when we see the indicators of suicide tendencies. So thank you for being here.
Absolutely. I hope to be back with better news next year.
So do I.
Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask, can you provide some data going back a couple of years on how these numbers have changed on these different demographics? For example, the veterans, is that a fairly static number, 23% of the breakdown? Is that typical, or how's that changing?
That I don't know off the top of my head. This past year, we made some efforts in collaboration with the Forensic Science Center to get some additional data that we hadn't had before, and that's one of those, those things that we were looking at. So for some of these data, we do have the trends over several years, and for some of them, these are new data coming into our group.
And then for the total number, 96 would be in the record. What I remember, maybe a year or two ago, was the number was about half of that. Is that about right? Can you remember?
It's been a while since we were at half of that. You know, I think back 10 years ago, and I can remember the rates being in the 50s and 60s. So it's certainly been trending.
Anyway, if you have that, if you have that data, it would be very, it'd be something I would like to look at and understand a little bit better. I think this ties into the issue of, this ties into the issue of our mental health and substance abuse and addiction treatments that we are involved in with Calm Care. And obviously, there's a lot more, there's a lot of work to do here, and I am concerned that we're not doing enough. And the numbers I remember looking at, maybe it's, maybe it's the third higher, but I just think there's been a steep curve, and it makes me wonder what's going on. One of the things I am familiar with a little bit, and then that is, again, I've knocked, I've been knocking on doors, talking to lots of people about a lot of topics, but this topic has come up with the people I've been speaking with, and some of those that have been personally influenced by family members who have committed suicide. We've had discussions, and one of the things, one of the things I'm concerned about, and I don't know what we can do here, but there's a little bit of a fear when people call the suicide hotline, they're not knowing what's going to happen to them. In other words, they feel like they're making the call that's going to change their life in a way they, they're not in control of it. And so the way we can comfort them and let them know that their life will not change, we just simply want to engage them with help, and they're still in control. I think that that fear is a deterrent to them making that phone call. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. The Suicide Prevention Hotline is really designed to be a resource for people. And so when an individual calls, certainly if they have made a suicide attempt, or we feel like their life is in immediate danger, we're going to get them some help immediately and call on the nice folks from EMS to assist us with that. But if, you know, they're just struggling and need some resources to treat their depression or their substance use, we are going to provide them with those resources and try to hook them up with, with things that they can then be in control of accessing to improve their life and their mental health.
Thank you. Then the final, the final thing, again, there's, I think there's a stigma also, if someone, someone says they need some help, say they're having a bad time of life, and you can imagine maybe there's some health issues going on, or relationship issues, or financial issues, that they're going through a bout of depression, if they, if they declare that, that they need that help, and for some folks, in some, certain careers, that can change their career from that point forward. And so there was a deterrent to them to actually admit that they need some help. And so I would like to, I guess, as a, maybe this is a national discussion that needs to happen, but there ought to be a way for someone to get help and not necessarily lose their career over it. If you're flying an airplane, for example, and you, and you're going through one of these situations, I'd rather have someone flying an airplane that's getting treatment than someone who's in denial because they don't want to admit that they're having a problem. So which is safer for the community? I'd rather have someone get the help and not be stigmatized and lose their career over that. So that's a national discussion, but I'd like to have, I guess, I don't know how to get that conversation started, but the stigma needs to be considered, that if someone loses their career, Department of Transportation drivers, for example, if they admit that they have a, you know, a depression issue, they may not be able to drive a truck. And so I understand the concern for the community, but not admitting that and not accepting that help is probably more dangerous. And so anyway, it's a concern I've got, and I've talked, again, I've talked to lots of people at the doors about this, and I've had a lot of folks say, absolutely, that's an issue we need to talk about.
Yeah. And I think one of the ways to address stigma is to get more people out and involved in some of these activities that I was referencing. The more that we talk about this, the more we can reduce stigma. And I absolutely agree with you. Addressing these problems early is going to be much better for a person's professional reputation than not addressing it.
Well, anyways, I just want to say thank you for the presentation once again, and hope things are better next year, but I think you're doing a great job, and thank you for bringing the data for, data to us this year. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, thanks again for being here. I'm very pleased that you're working with the VA. It's tragic that 23% of the folks are veterans, the same people that protected all of our lives and protected our country are now taking theirs for some reason. We've got to find a solution to that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I will say, I move to receive and file.
Second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file. Discussion, scene none. Madam Clerk, color roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Renzo.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item F, Presentation of Retirement Certificates.
Warren Bethany. Welcome. Who are we starting with?
We're going to start with Yula.
Very good.
So our first retirement is Yula West, Public Relation and Information Clerk. Yula was hired December 5th, 1969, and is retiring Friday, September 15th, after 49 years of service. Yula, would you like to say a couple words?
Just give me a minute.
More than a couple, I'm sure.
I got my big stick. I won't stand in your way. Good morning, Commissioners, County Manager, and everybody. I can't imagine me standing up here, but I guess it's real. They told me it was. But I can't believe that when I come in here, I come in for two weeks' work. Mr. Paul Pickler, who was a purchasing agent, and with the telephone people, he said, when I got through, I was doing a little study for the telephone people, and he says, "Yula", he said, "I have a question for you. Can you help me out for a couple of weeks?" He said, "I've got a girl on vacation, and I need you." I said, "Oh, well, maybe so." So I worked the two weeks, went back to Mr. P., and I said, "Mr. P., two weeks is up." "Well, Yula," I said, "oh, no, not now." He said, "Can you work January, February, and March?" I said, he said, "That's the busiest months we have around here. You can get your auto tags regardless of what your name is." I said, "Well, I guess so." So I worked that three months, went back to him, and he says, "Yula, I have one more question." I said, "Oh, no. Now what?" He said, "Would you like to have a job?" I said, "Well, I guess so. I've worked half of the year now." So that's how come me to be here. And I don't know, I don't know why I had a massive stroke, but the good Lord knows. But you can tell it didn't take my big mouth. It took my eye, but not my big mouth. So I can still tell people where to go. And I'm very happy, I've been happy with my job. I hate to be leaving, but if I can't give my best, I can walk. So that's what I'm doing today, but I appreciate everybody here. I appreciate all of my friends, even to the County Manager, he's my big boss. But anyway, I've had a lot of bosses, they have been wonderful to me, they've been sported to me, had one female, and that was Leela Albright. The rest of them have been male bosses, but they've been wonderful. So with that, I'm going to say farewell, but we're going to meet in this room again, I think it's about 2:00, for refreshments. So now, if you want to come by for refreshments, I don't think we have any here today, you can come back afternoon at 2:00, okay? Well, with that, I'm going to say goodbye, and may God bless.
Oh, Ms. Yula Don. Ms. Yula? Ms. Yula? If you'll wait up there for just a moment, I'm sure that the Commissioners all want to say something, and I'm going to come down and present your certificate in a minute. I'm going to leave the bench and come down and do that, but we have a few things that we'd like to talk about. We're going to talk a little bit more this afternoon at 2:00, when we have you going away. But I'm going to start it off, a little discussion about Ms. Yula, before the other Commissioners, so that, and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Unruh, he can run it while I head down. But, you know, I've only known Ms. Yula personally for a couple of years, but I want to read a letter that is in her personnel file, okay? This letter is dated March 27th, 2000, and it was written to Commissioner Tom Winters, who was the Commissioner of District 3 at that time. Says, "Dear Commissioner Winters, on March 14th, students from North High School Business Department had the opportunity to tour several key activities within Sedgwick County Courthouse. The visit and discussions could not have been possible without the suburb's support and assistance of Ms. Yula West. She assisted with the planning and scheduling of our visit, along with guiding our students throughout the tour. She is truly a valuable asset to Sedgwick County. Her assistance was very much appreciated. Our tour began with a visit to the 911 facility, where Ms. Tina Hood provided an outstanding overview of the facility and how it operates within Sedgwick County. Following the 911 tour, Mr. Randy Duncan from Emergency Management took time to talk to our students about how his department serves the citizens of our community. Last but not least, the students had the opportunity to observe Judge Joseph Ribieska's courtroom during an actual trial. The next day, Ms. West followed up our visit with a call to give us the verdict in the court case that the students had observed. That type of personal interreaction with our students was the norm. For each of the Sedgwick County employees we had an opportunity to meet, please pass on our sincere appreciation to each of these individuals. Thank them for the time and effort they gave our students, which made the visit both educational and enjoyable. Sincerely, signed David T. Dennis, North High Business Department." I signed that letter about 17 years ago, 18 years ago.
Yes, Commissioner, I give, in the December month, I give an interview with all of the high schools for their madrigal singers, and they was happy to come in.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciated you back on March of 2000, I appreciate you today. And I know that the other Commissioners are going to want to have a chance to talk, but I'm going to go down, Commissioner Unruh will guide the discussion, and I'll come down to see you. Thank you. Any other Commissioners which speak at this time?
Well, Commissioners, before you turn on your lights, I'll just make my comments and say, Yula, you clearly have had an impact on so many lives that, not only visitors to Sedgwick County, but also to the employees here in the courthouse. And you are consistently cheerful and optimistic and energetic and encouraging, and those are the things that, you know, we need around here a lot. So we really, we really appreciate that. But one of the things you just mentioned is also, I think, worthy of emphasis, and that's the fact that you schedule madrigal groups to come here during Christmas time. And that's, you know, that's great to celebrate Christmas that way, but it brightens up the courthouse, visitors, and employees here all really enjoy it. So I just want to say especially thank you for, for your effort in doing that. And we do have more comments. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Yula, you're obviously an institution, a legend, and nobody wants to see you go, but understand that you felt at 90, that was probably an appropriate time to go. But I appreciated celebrating your 90th birthday out at the farm last year, that was a lot of fun, but you're wonderful, and I wish you well in retirement, and I hope you come back and visit us. But we all love you, and anybody that's been through the courthouse over the last 50 years loves you too. I mean, it's incredible, your longevity. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I came here a few years ago, I didn't know you before then, but you came, you came up, and you are so welcoming and cheerful and smiling and loving, and every time I see you, you're always the same. I'm not sure that you've ever been anything but smiling and loving to everyone. I call you the personality of Sedgwick County.
Thank you.
And I just was curious, I went back to 1969 to see how many Commissioners you've, you've interfaced with. Do you know, there's been 28 Commissioners.
Well, I really don't know what retirement qualifications are, but they told me that it was so many years of service, plus your age. Well, let's see, I've got 49 years of service, and I'm 91, so I think that qualifies me, don't you?
You sure do. I think you're topped out, but you're topped out. But 28 Commissioners have been here since you've been here, and so
Oh, yeah.
We come and go, but you're an icon. Everyone knows you.
Now, I have all of the service books that we printed up until they no longer printed them, and they date back to 1969. So if anybody wants the books, I'm often called on them. Who was the, who was the sheriff back in '74? Who was, and I always have to relate back to them.
Well, anyway, thank you.
I've got a pretty good mind, but not that far.
You're going to be, you're going to be missed, and we'll always think of you, especially around Christmas time, and may I say the word peanut brittle. You've done a tremendous job just loving this community in every way, so thank you for all you've done here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Renzo.
Yula, I just want to echo everything that the other Commissioners had. You truly are the face of Sedgwick County. You'll be missed, we hope you come back and visit us, and we'll, we'll see and talk to you more this afternoon, and wish you the best of luck in retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, thanks, everybody here, and like I say, you're invited to the refreshments at 2:00, if you wish to come.
Very good. Can we go around to the front of the podium, and we'll get some pictures?
Well, all right.
He's a hugger. Oh, look at that, he's a hugger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And here's the letter I signed up.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your message.
Next, we have Scott Hadley, our EMS Director. Scott was hired as the Temporary EMT on February 22nd, 1989, and during his 29 years, Scott has served in many roles in EMS and has been our EMS Director since 2010. Scott is retiring on Monday, September 17th, after 29 years of service. Here are some things you may not know about Scott and his career. He was an ASE Certified Master Automotive Technician and worked as a mechanic for 10 years at a local car dealership prior to his EMS career. One year, his EMS coworkers and friend, friends planned a surprise birthday party for him, but they forgot to invite him. And his wife, Laura, had to stalk him because, in his words, he was too dumb to ask her out. He was the first person in his immediate family to earn a college degree, and he has baked 150 red velvet cupcakes with cream cheese frosting each Christmas since 2011, and delivered them to the on-duty EMS crews working that day and night. Congratulations, Scott. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. And yes, I won't get into the stalking story, but it's not really that, I don't want to paint it in that way, but I was too dumb to ask her out, so she had, she had to find me. But anyway, I do appreciate her, she's been my bedrock, and she's been by my side every, the bulk of my career, and I wouldn't be here today without her. I think she deserves one of the manager's coins for enduring me the last 24 years, so we need to congratulate her. But I want to take a trip back in time just for a moment, make a couple points. 1974 was a pivotal moment for Sedgwick County EMS. In 1974, there was discourse and increasing degree of dissatisfaction with a private provider providing services to the city of Wichita, and this county wasn't getting the same level of services. So some wise folks back in 1974 decided Sedgwick County would take the lead. And on August 22nd, 1974, the Board of County Commission entered into the first agreement with the city of Wichita and formalized what we are today, of Sedgwick County EMS providing, being the exclusive provider for emergency services for both the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County. It wasn't really supposed to go into effect till the following summer, 1975, but things didn't go well, so about the third week in February, 1975, Sedgwick County EMS made its first call to citizens of the community. And by the end of that year, eight new ambulances were delivered, and we responded to a little over 6,000 calls for service. Let's fast forward to today, and today, we'll run about 10 times that amount of calls, we're looking at about 63,000 calls. We're looking at about 63,000 calls. And although the faces have changed in each of those governing bodies, the unwavering commitment to our citizens has never, has never wavered at all, and I greatly appreciate that. You've been very supportive of EMS over the years, and I am very grateful to be part of that and to be part of that history of EMS. You can pick up a paper today and read, somewhere in the country, we're shutting down EMS services. The community is no longer be able to get EMS services. The provider there is leaving. That has never been the case there. In fact, we're adding services next year. Citizens, we're going to enhance services next year. We're going to open up a new station either the end of this year or the first of next year. We're going, we just remodeled the station, which is set to open next week again. So, there's been an ongoing support, and I've got the privilege of being here, serving the community all of those years, so I am very grateful. And if you didn't know, as of today, we've responded to about a million and a half calls for service and transported a little under 1.1 million patients to hospitals and other destinations in Sedgwick County today, and that is just remarkable. And we couldn't have done that without the support. A lot of my supporting cast is here today, and those folks will be here, when I walk out the door Monday night, will be here continuing to deliver those services at a high-quality level. And I want to rest, that your rest assured, and the citizens are assured, they're still going to get quality services. And I am just so grateful and fortunate and privileged to be able to stand here before you today and get to lead EMS. It's just been an awesome and humbling journey, and I am extremely grateful. And I want to thank you and all our other public safety partners, hospital partners, and everybody that makes us what we are today. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. I'll almost start it off again this time and turn it over to Commissioner Unruh once again, because I want to be able to present you your retirement certificate. But one of the people that I've worked with probably closer than anyone in the two years I've been on the commission is Scott Hadley as Director of EMS, because we've worked some really important issues for the future of Sedgwick County EMS. First of all, we found out that the VA hadn't been paying us notice a million and a half dollars. And we're still working that issue today, by the way, but we're getting closer. But that's been an ongoing issue for over a year now, just trying to solve that. But I got to know Scott and his leadership ability through that, and then recently, we went into negotiations with the city of Wichita on providing EMS for the citizens inside the city of Wichita. That negotiation was much harder than I anticipated it was ever going to be. I've probably learned more about EMS operations than most people will ever know on this commission as we went through figuring out exactly how that it operates and how efficient that that operation is. Well over 99% of our calls are answered, this is non-emergent calls, are answered within an hour. Within an hour for non-emergent calls, 99%. I think that's fantastic. And how did that happen? It's because of Scott and his team of leaders that know how to manage an emergency management system. We're also certified, one of how many in the entire United States?
Accredited. We're one of about 180 in the United States out of about 16,000 ground ambulance services.
15,180, and we're one of them. Again, that is Scott's leadership and Scott's team's leadership. We're going to miss you. We know that you're leaving behind a great team. That's part of being a great leader, is that you always have to have someone that can step in when you leave. And we appreciate the fact that you did leave a team behind you that can carry on your legacy. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Unruh. He can make the first comments, and he can run it from there. I'm going to come down, and I, it is my great honor to present you with your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Scott, I can say lots of things about you and the impact you've had on Sedgwick County. We talked about your personality, you're a nice guy, good guy, fun to be around. Talked about your character. We have absolute confidence in your integrity and your honesty and those things that make you a reliable person, dependable, somebody that we can depend upon in all situations. But the chairman talked a lot about your leadership ability, and that's, that's the tangible thing that's been so important to Sedgwick County over these years. And I, I think it's evident, the impact that you've had on Sedgwick County public safety, and we are, we're profoundly grateful that you have been willing to serve us and grateful for your excellent leadership. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
And we have a comment from, well, Commissioner O'Donnell.
All right. Scott, thank you so much for your service. What many people don't know is that I've been friends with the Hadleys since 2005. When I was just 20, I started working for Laura, who's in the back of the room, and so I can attest to what Scott said, that Laura does deserve the manager's coin, and not just because of him, but because you managed me for, what, four years? And I'm not, and despite popular belief, I'm not an easy person to manage. And so, I came, I came to love, I came to love Laura and Scott through that, and just wonderful people. And Scott, you've made Sedgwick County a safer place for the last 30 years and a better place for the last 30 years, and there's not many people that can say that, that people are alive today and that, that people have had a higher quality of life because of somebody's career, but you have, and we've all benefited from that, and you're not going to be easily replaced, and we're going to miss you. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you so much. Excuse me. Director Hadley, I just wanted to let you know that you have represented the county extremely well. I think, I think you're a tremendous professional. You're always sharply dressed, and you're distinguished, and your leadership is, is well noted. You're just a tremendous leader in every way, and you have built up a tremendous system. We started from very little, and you've grown that system to be one of the best in the nation. I've said that over and over. I'm extremely proud of all of our staff that work for you. You hone their skills, but they are, they are also professional because of your leadership. And I will, I will stand up our EMS system to anybody, anyone in the nation. I think we have one of the very best in the nation. As a consequence, the public has an absolute total faith in that service we provide. I mean, you talk to anyone, the takeaway is, they did, they did a great job, and they did, they did their job extremely well, and we trust in their services, and that is no accident. That just shows your leadership, that you've, that you've made this happen. So, I want to say thank you for all your service, all your service to the county. It is well noted, and whatever you do, I know it will do, it'll be done well. It's your character, and we're going to miss you greatly. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Renzo.
Yeah, I'll echo again everything everyone said. Thank you very much for your professionalism, your dedication. You've done a wonderful job. I appreciate everything you've done. I truly hope that you enjoy your retirement, which, by the way, do you have any plans for retirement you could tell us about? You going to travel the world, or what?
Well, we're going to, the first two weeks of October, we're going to Florida. My wife is originally from Florida, and we're going to make some determination if we're going to maybe relocate there again or stay around here. So, we're going to travel a little bit and have a little fun.
Well, enjoy it. You deserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, I got some comments real quick. So, Scott, you know, we've talked several times since you announced your retirement, and so publicly, I'd like to just echo just some of what they said, but, you know, I've never seen a professional such as yourself whose dedication and commitment, but zeal and aggressive attitude towards every task that you have been given, and the technical expertise, you will have no trouble in your retirement. I know your wife will probably want you in Florida, but you'll have no trouble being a consultant or some other, some other gig, just in just how much knowledge that you have. But you throw yourself behind it unlike any other person I've ever seen. And, and you're absolutely right. I do have a county manager's coin for your wife. She deserves it, and honestly, it's, it's the families that make the professional, and in this case, this is, that is truly what, what happened. So.
Let me recognize her. There you go.
She was in the Navy.
If you're dropping, do push-ups. But I just wanted to say. To support him in the service because he benefited us, so thank you.
Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Appreciate everything you've done. Thank you. And thank you for letting us have you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Brittany, we, do we have any more?
No.
All right, thank you then.
Well, thank you all, and thank you, Scott, and to Ula. What we're seeing is close to 80 years of experience walking out the door at one time, and we're going to, they're both going to be very highly missed. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item G, reconsideration of item seven of the August 9th, 2018 meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Kristin McGovern, Senior Buyer in Purchasing. At the August 15th Commission Meeting, purchasing requested to defer item number seven for merchant services, and we are now bringing this item back to you for your approval. And the recommendation is to accept the proposal from Gila LLC DBA Municipal Services Bureau and establish contract pricing for three years with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend for approval.
Questions from board. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, provided a four-page detailed list yesterday of the debit network fee schedule for Bank of America, and I spent some time trying to look at this and figure out exactly what this means. This is very detailed, and it's, I would just say, quite confusing. But I'm asked, I would like to know, is anybody, is there like a standard interchange fee for debit card transactions? Because on a lot of these, it goes down, it looks like one penny is the interchange fee in some cases. Do we know what the interchange fee is for PIN, for PIN debit transactions?
Brandy Bailey from the Finance Department. There's no standard transaction interchange fee for PIN debit transactions. That schedule that was sent to you, depending on what type of network the card decides to travel through, I believe there was, there's several networks listed on there. The bank has told us that most cards travel through five, five of those off there more times than not, but there is not a standard. It's all, it just depends on the type of a card, whether it's a MasterCard debit, a Visa card debit, an American Express debit, a prepaid debit. So, there's, there's not a standard, and that's where, yesterday I had mentioned to you that, that it's very fluid, it's very hard to pinpoint and determine what a true cost of a debit card transaction is.
Okay, so I got the idea that in some cases, the interchange fees are actually very small, and I don't know, you know, maybe it's just one penny, I'm not sure.
Right. Sometimes it's very, very, very small, and sometimes it's, I think there's some that go up to maybe even 2% on there, but it's, it's very fluid.
2% of the, of the transaction?
2% of the transaction, correct.
So, looking at this chart, most of these are, are flat, excuse me, flat fees, but it's hard for me to navigate the chart and find out exactly where, where someone would end up, because there's so many different options here, but I am curious why we did not, you, looking at the, looking at the different options on the chart, can we talk, talk a little bit about, excuse me, once again, I'm sorry, talk a little bit about why we chose, this is not the lowest bid on this chart, can we talk a little bit about why we selected one that's a little more expensive? It's about $52,000 more than what I see is the lowest bid on here.
When we did the proposal, we had requirements in there or things that we were going to evaluate the responders on, and MSB Gila had the highest, once we did the evaluation, they came out with the highest number on the evaluation. A lot of it was the, their, what they could offer us, that was part of it, what their references had, how they responded to us. They just, they just came out overall on top with the, with the highest number through the, through the criteria.
Can you, so, one of the things that's different in this is that this is the first time we've, we're actually adopting a model that there's, where there's a convenience fee built into this charging. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that convenience fee is intended so that there's no charge to the county, no matter what, so the consumer's covering the entire cost, and there'll be
Correct. Well, we've had the convenience fee, convenience fee established in the Treasurers Office for those who do property tax payments at 4%. That, that has gone, we started them, doing that convenience fee in 2012 with originally, I think it was 2% and then 3.95 for debit cards, and then in 2016, we changed it to just a 2%. And then last year in June, we changed it up to a 4% fee, but the county still paid for those fees. We kept that, the convenience fee, and kept it in a revenue GL to help us offset the expenses that were charged to us by our current provider. So, this particular model, correct, is, the fee is being charged by the merchant, and the merchant will keep that fee, and therefore Sedgwick County will not receive any, any bill.
Okay. Well, I have, I guess I have a concern that if someone wants to pay their, pay their tax bill, there ought to be some options where they can pay it without having to incur these fees. Someone who has a cash, has a cash-back credit card, I understand if they're getting cash back, why they would potentially have a, would have a fee. That does make sense to me that, on average, someone wants to finance through their credit card and their taxes, that's, that's an option, they can do that, but there's going to be a fee associated with that. But an E-check and for a PIN debit, in my opinion, I wish that there would be no fee on that, because actually it saves us processing costs and not having to deal with a check. And our, our cost is very, very low, and yes.
And I did just want to make a comment, though, for the E-check, though, when, when a customer goes out and uses an E-check, it's not verified guaranteed funds. All that's happening in that, in the, in that ACH world is it's checking the routing number just to verify that it is a bank account that's open. It doesn't verify that the funds are available. So, we do still have return checks on E-check transactions. So, there is still that processing that happens to, to make sure we can collect on those checks.
So, with, with this model, if someone wants to do an E-check online, and they set this up, we're going to charge them, looks like five cents?
Five cents a transaction, yes. And our average transaction on E-checks, last year it was 20, $2,100. So, it's just, it's adding the five cents to the $2,100.
Again, not to say it's not, not a significant amount of money, because it's all, it's all important, but it seems, it seems like we ought to encourage someone to pay that way, because it's, it's the least administratively, it's easiest for us if they want to pay that way, it's the least cost us down, down, down that path, so charging five cents, to me, it just seems, seems like a strange thing to do there, but, well, anyway, it seems like the debit card fees that were being incurred before and the E-check fees from before under the Bank of, Bank of America model is actually maybe a better deal than what we're getting this round, so I have some concerns about this, this election on a number of reasons, but I don't like to see the increase in fees on debit, on PIN debits or on, or on E-checks. I think that's the wrong direction to go here. I do like the reduction from 4% down to 2.19% for the credit card. That, that's fine, that's good if it covers the cost, but it sounds like that may not really cover the cost. The shortfall's being made up by people using PIN debit and E-check. That's my concern. We're shifting the burden from one payer to another.
I think we're really, we're trying to make it more fair to those who decide to use a credit card or a debit card, so instead of the burden being on the person paying their property tax payment and trying to subsidize the fee for someone who's paying for a fire permit with a credit card, I think it's just, I think it's making it a little bit more fair.
I understand your, your perspective. I think the word "fair" is a, is a debatable term. I, I think this is actually unfair, because we're shifting the burden from someone who's has the cash, wants to pay their, pay their bill, we're actually adding a fee to them.
I do like the reduction from 4% down to 2.19% for the credit card. That's fine, that's good, if it covers the cost, but it sounds like that may not really cover the cost. The shortfall's being made up by people using PIN debit and E-check. That's my concern. We're shifting the burden from one payer to another.
I think we're really, we're trying to make it more fair to those who decide to use a credit card or a debit card, so instead of the burden being on the person paying their property tax payment and trying to subsidize the fee for someone who's paying for a fire permit with a credit card, I think it's making it a little bit more fair.
I understand your perspective. I think the word "fair" is a debatable term. I think this is actually unfair, because we're shifting the burden from someone who's has the cash, wants to pay their bill, we're actually adding a fee to them so that they can essentially cover the shortfall that someone's paying by credit card isn't covering their full fee. And that's, there's revenue shifting from different methods of payment is the way I see this, and so I guess I see that as unfair. So, I may have to disagree with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I would just like to compliment the Finance Department and the Purchasing Department for doing an excellent job, I think, of negotiating what I believe is very equitable charges for these alternative ways of paying. It comes out to be a user fee. If you want to use certain types of payment, then there are costs associated with it, and those costs are not going to be absorbed by county and spread to the entire tax base. The users will have to pay those, what are minimal fees. And so, to me, it seems like this is a very equitable solution and well-negotiated, and it has reduced the major, what was perhaps a little bit too much of a charge, what we were doing. This is getting things back in line, and I know that you all took your tasks seriously and came up with good solutions, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Commissioner Unruh's comments, that I appreciate exactly what's happened between Finance and Purchasing on this issue. This past year, as I recall, we lost $53,000, $54,000 as a result of that shortfall on how much that we were able to recover from the credit cards and so forth. In the future, there will be no shortfall whatsoever, and I appreciate you finding a solution so that we have no shortfall for all of the citizens. There's nothing coming out of the general funds. Every one of our citizens has a choice to make when they decide that they want to pay their property tax and other bills. They can do exactly what I do, and I write a check, and it doesn't cost me anything. So, if they don't want to use that option, and they have, we've now provided them other options. Some of those options are going to cost them a nickel. That's not too much to bear, I don't think, to exercise a different option. Some of the other ones are going to cost them a little bit more, but that's the choice that they are making, so I don't have a problem with that. I did have a problem with us subsidizing overall out of the general fund to a tune of over $50,000 in this past year. Commissioner O'Donnell has a couple of comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate everything that your office did on this particular issue. This was something that I started talking about last year when I realized the county had a 4% fee that we were charged and that the state use law was at 2.25%. So, I thought there was some vast inequity there, and in fact, we had to raise it from 2% we were charging to 4% at least to cover the county side. But we have negotiated a position, your office has, that has lowered it below both the state use law for the credit card and also for debit, because it's 2.25 either way. So, this is one of the lowest fees in the state that any county's going to have. And if you look at cutting those fees in half, I mean, that could save the taxpayers of Sedgwick County. If 45,000 credit cards were used last year, roughly, you're going to be saving about $200,000, the citizens of Sedgwick County, actually north of that, if that number holds. So, I think this is a win overall. It's going to cost, based on last year's estimates, about $10,000 more for people using debit cards, but saving over $200,000 for people using credit cards. So, overall, it's a big net positive for the taxpayers of Sedgwick County that are using either credit or debit to pay their bills when you add it all up. So, I think it's great, and hopefully now the state can look at what we're doing and look at ways to lower their costs as well from that 2.25%. So, thank you to your entire department.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau.
Yeah, I want to thank you for your work on this as well. Chairman's right, I think it cost us a little over $50,000 last year, but I think it's important to remember, just a few years ago, it was costing us around $1 million a year out of the general fund. So, we thought we did pretty good initially, getting it down from $1 million to $50,000. Now, it's down to zero, and to have a model like this, I mean, all you have to, you know, we just went out and asked the question to see what we could get, and we come up with this, and I think, I mean, I think it's a good thing for the taxpayer all around, because, you know, I never really thought we'd get down to zero, but here we are, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau, or Commissioner Howell, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just want to clarify a point. Again, I think lowering the 4% fee down to 2.25, or in this case, 2.19, is definitely good. I'd like to support that. Looks like one of the options on here is about 1.96%. It's even less than that. There's also a flat fee added to that, so it's probably something a little bit north of around 2%. So, it's still, again, it's an option we could have chosen, or even in the Bank of America, I think would have been, I guess, possibly better, because we're talking interchange fee plus 4 cents. Whereas the one we're choosing is interchange fee, which is exactly the same thing, plus 0.07%, plus 4 cents. So, clearly, the Bank of America would have been less. My point is, we have other options. I don't think, my opinion is, wasn't analyzed for the lowest cost, and we owe it to the taxpayers. I don't want to use general funds, I agree with the chairman on that. I don't mind passing all the costs to the consumers, that's fine, but we owe it to them to find the least amount of money. If someone wants to pay their taxes with a credit card, we'd like to lower the interest to charge on that as much as possible. There are several options on this chart that would be much less expensive than the one that's being recommended today. So, it's not that I'm happy with status quo. I think lowering this fee is smart. We should do that. Just FYI, the E-check, the total cost we're going to charge for the E-check for 21,000 transactions is going to be $1,076. That's the total cost we're going to collect by charging 21,534 people a nickel each. To me, I'm not against charging the nickel, but it's just interesting, we're talking about $1,000 there. This fee, a couple of years ago, altogether, the county was having over $1 million of shortfall each year. So, we've essentially solved the problem 95%. We're dealing with the last 5% right now, and now we're talking about $1,000. So, I'm not saying these aren't worthy discussions, they certainly are, but the E-check issues, $1,000, the debit card we're talking is just under $10,000, it's $9,697 is what we would expect to get from those fees. Altogether, it's $10,773. Again, not saying it's not a worthy discussion, it certainly is, but the bulk of this is credit cards. We're going to allow the credit card merchant service provider to collect $336,000 based on this model, whereas it could be essentially about $50,000, $52,000 less by picking one of these other models. And so, we're allowing someone to charge more money than is needed to provide this service, and that's my problem. And I do want to say, I do appreciate the work that was done. This has been a difficult discussion to get to this point. I appreciate the presentation and the work that you all have done, so please understand, I appreciate all your work on this, I really do. I just think there's a couple of better options here, and the fees would be lower, and that's my reason for being a little bit opposing this today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we had a team of individuals from Purchasing and from the Finance Department that looked at every one of these options and chose the one that, in their professional knowledge, based on years of experience in finance and purchasing, chose this option. So, I move that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on September 6, 2018.
Kristin McGovern, thank you. Senior Buyer of Purchasing. The September 6, 2018 meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts resulted in four items for your approval. Item number one is the patient-run reporting hardware for emergency medical service, and the recommendation is to accept the quote from Apple Inc. for an initial purchase of $53,550 in established contract pricing according to NASBO master agreement, MNWNC-102, State of Kansas Contract Number 40398, good through March 31, 2019. Item number two, patient-run reporting service for emergency medical service, and the recommendation is to accept the quote from AT&amp;T Government Solutions, Inc. for the initial annual cost of $31,200 in established contract pricing according to the WISCA and NASBO with the State of Nevada master agreement with State of Kansas participating agreement S1907 for Public Safety Broadband Network for First Responder Service, good through June 30, 2019. Item number three is for four each, three-quarter ton regular body cargo vans equipped with nine animal transport cages for fleet management and animal control. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Donhatton Chevrolet in the amount of And item number four, jail expansion for project services, and the recommendation is to accept the quote from Schaefer-Johnson Cox and Frye Architecture in the amount of And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval for these items.
Thank you. Questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am supportive of the recommendation today, but I just wanted to make a point on the item number three. The vehicles were replaced in 1970, 19, excuse me, I guess they are, excuse me, 2008 to 2011. Do we know, do we know, remind, my questions are answered on the sheet, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I move that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike calls, County Manager. Recommend you approve Consent Agenda Item India.
Move to approve Item India. Second. Does anyone have a motion to second that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Yost.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Yost, County Counselor. On the legislative issues, we, of course, have already expressed our desire for certain legislation from the Kansas Association of Counties. They're still contemplating that. Treasurer Kozier is going to go up to their meeting on the 21st and make a presentation about the matter that she requested that they offer. And then we also have a staff meeting coming up, I believe it's on September 18th, to talk about other legislative, possible legislative requests that we all have. So, we're moving right along, and I'm hoping that we have our agenda complete by September at some point.
And depending on what we can do, we may move that to the 17th or some other day.
Or some other future. We're ready to go whenever it is.
I don't think it'll happen on the 18th.
All right.
Bottom line. Okay? Anything else, Mr. Yost?
No, not for me.
Very good. Next item, please.
Other.
Any Commissioners have anything for other today?
I'd like to make two more comments. First of all, I want to congratulate the zoo on an outstanding zoo-blee just last past Saturday night. There were tons of people there, tons of food, bands, you name it, it was happening at the zoo. It was a little kind of overcast that evening, but it didn't dampen the enjoyment of all the folks that were there. So, I want to congratulate the Sedgwick County Zoo for holding another great zoo-blee. The other thing that I want to congratulate is McConnell Air Force Base. They held the first airshow since, for the past six years, I think it's been since eight years, for the past eight years, that's the first time we've had an airshow out there. Brought the Thunderbirds in, which was fantastic, Tora, 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 a number of other aircraft were flying, stunts and so forth, static aircraft displays, Doc was sitting out there along with a number of other aircraft. It was a great exhibition of air power, and flexibility is the key to air power, and we were able to demonstrate it at McConnell Air Force Base. So, congratulations to everyone out there, and thanks, I know a lot of people worked over their weekend, but that's not unusual for the military, because it's a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation, and I sincerely appreciated the support that they gave to show our community what a great organization the United States Air Force is and McConnell Air Force Base is a jewel here in Sedgwick County. Any other Commissioners have anything they'd like to add? Seeing nothing, I see that we have no executive session today with nothing else before it comes forth.